Mayor, whenever you are ready.
I'm not, but I'm not. It's seriously, it's weird hearing it from out there. Hi, welcome all to the Joint City Council Planning Commission meeting. This is a special meeting workshop Tuesday, May 13th, 2025 at 5:33. Meeting is now called to order. Fudge of allegiance, Councilmember Morris Lopez. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda. Councilmember Frios.
Here.
Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian.
Here.
Mayor Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Britno. Commissioner Marcherana. Commissioner Pisano.
Here.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Here.
And Chair DeBries.
Thank you very much. This is a workshop on the Historic Resources Preservation Ordinance. And, excuse me, sorry, we have Rincon here to present. If you want to take it away.
Thank you. Before I get started on my presentation, I just wanted to thank you all for having me here tonight. Rincon started working with the city in late 2024. We've had an opportunity to both work with the ordinance and now to review it a little bit. And before I get started in my presentation, I'd just like to say that, you know, San Juan Batista really is a very special place. And so far, you've done a really good job of documenting, evaluating, and celebrating your historic and cultural resources. And hopefully this will be a continuation of that work. And I know a lot of that has come from your community, which is really active, including several community groups. And so I want to acknowledge all the work that they've done to get us to this point.
Awesome, thank you. And I'm sorry, Julianne, if you will introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name's Julianne Murphy. I am an architectural historian with Rincon Consultants. I've been doing this work for almost 15 years now. And like I said, we've been working with the city since late 2024. I will get my presentation pulled up here. So we are going to review your preservation ordinance today. But before I start that, we, the first half of the presentation, I'm going to go over how we've gotten to where you are today, including up to tonight's presentation. A little basic overview of historic preservation, just to kind of get us all on the same page. And I totally recognize that preservation is a very strange little corner of planning and zoning. And so if ever I'm talking about something and you're unclear on some of my explanations or you have additional questions, I'm happy to pause because that's what I'm here for. And then I'll get into a little bit deeper review of what we've looked at so far and recommendations that we have. So the purpose of tonight's study session is to provide basic information on the city's ordinance, to provide key issues about the current ordinance and provide context for the Historic Resources Board Planning Commission and City Council to consider for your future planning efforts. Little bit of background, we'll go through this pretty quickly. Like I said, you've had an active community group for quite some time that's been interested in the preservation of your community. In 1977, you began exploring pathways for preserving the built environment and had a Citizens Advisory Committee formed, which led to the adoption of the Historic Preservation Ordinance in 1979, which is pretty, pretty early for a preservation ordinance in this state. In 1980, the city was awarded grant money to conduct a survey, which was completed in 1981. Subsequent to the survey, there was an update to the ordinance in 1982 to incorporate some of those findings. It was updated subsequently in 1987, 1989, and 2004, which to that point had only been minor revisions and things to clarify the language in the ordinance. In 2006, the city undertook a second survey, an update really, and that was supported through a grant received through the Certified Local Government Program, which I'll go over a little bit later in the presentation. And in 2008, you updated your ordinance again. And really, that 2006 survey report recommended updating the ordinance. And the current version of the ordinance is a result of those recommendations. In 2019, the Historic Resources Board and Planning Commission discussed the potential to have several more updates, recognizing that some aspects of the ordinance and the preservation program are challenging to administer. So since 2023, this is really kind of where, where this effort has come from. In October 3rd, 2023, the Historic Resources Board started to discuss the ordinance and really look at the depth and breadth of what's included in the ordinance. As a result of that meeting, they continued the discussion to the November 7th, 2023 meeting and continued to discuss the ordinance and expressed interest in a consultant-led workshop to review some of the peculiarities and issues that they were facing. On February 6th, 2024, the HRB received a presentation from Maureen Clovis, who was the Historic Resources Consultant previous to myself. And she provided some recommendations for some updates. That night, the HRB moved to form a subcommittee to begin reviewing and updating the ordinance. And from what I can tell, that subcommittee has not met. So some historic preservation basics, really historic preservation happens kind of on two different planes. They are related, but they are different. The local review is usually located in the zoning code as it is in San Juan Batista. And that includes things like how to designate resources and how to then administer your permit review process. And that's all local level review responsibilities. Concurrent to that is the California Environmental Quality Act. The California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, acknowledges that cultural resources, both archaeological and historic, as part of the environment that deserve protection. And so these two, as part of that process, when there is a SEQA project, there's a responsibility to identify if there are any historic resources, if there were, if the project could have the potential to cause an adverse change in the significance of any identified resources. And if so, the impact could be mitigated or avoided. And so because in, during the SEQA process, the city is acting as the lead agency, you're using or referencing your local ordinance and your local review process to inform your SEQA process. So though they are separate, they do interact with each other in a way that's very important to understand. I will say, before we start getting into more of the details, right now, there are instances of language in your historic preservation ordinance that conflate the two processes that could benefit from some clarity. Certified Local Government, the city of San Juan Batista is a certified local government. It is a program where local, state, and federal governments work together to help communities preserve your historic resources. It's administered by both the National Park Service and the State Historic Preservation Office, which is also sometimes referred to as Office of Historic Preservation, OHP. Participation in the program provides access to benefits, including funding through grants, technical assistance, and other shipboat assistance programs. Like I was mentioning before, your 2006 survey program was able to be administered because of a CLG grant that you received. Like any program where there's benefits, there's also regulation, there's things you have to do. And one of the duties as being part of a CLG government is you have to enforce appropriate state and local laws and regulations for the designation and protection of resources, establish a Historic Preservation Review Commission by local ordinance, maintain a system for the survey and inventory of historic properties, provide for public participation in the local preservation program, and satisfactorily perform responsibilities delegated to it by the state. For example, we, we just helped the city prepare their annual CLG report, which is one of the requirements of the program. So a robust historic preservation program includes several elements. The Historic Preservation Ordinance is one of those important elements, probably the key element, but I want to stress, not the only element. There are certain components found in most effective preservation ordinances throughout California. And this is offered through guidance from OHP, I'm not just making this up. And they include stating the purpose, having an enabling authority, establishing a preservation commission, procedures and criteria for designation, procedures and criteria for action subject to review, consideration of the economic effect of designation, a process for appeals, a process for enforcement, and definition so that everyone understands the same language. As I was stating previously, that's just one piece of it. There are other non-regulatory techniques that are essential to having a robust program. Those are supplementary tools that include things like the city's general plan, historic context statement, design guidelines, focus planning documents like you have with the historic San Juan Batista plan, supplemental planning materials, guidance documents, technical documents, memos, things like that, and your permit application checklist. These are probably the more appropriate places to have your bigger ideas, your general goals for how you want your program to operate, focused initiatives you might have, and other more kind of grand ideas you have for your preservation plan. So taking a look at San Juan Batista's preservation ordinance, you'll see on the left here is the, the elements that are in your ordinance and on the right are the ones recommended for a well-functioning ordinance. And it looks like, oh, great, we have basically all of them. But there are features that are not necessary in the ordinance that makes it difficult to understand, hard to use for both you as reviewers, for applicants, and for your staff, which is small. Common pitfalls we see in preservation ordinances are that they're too detailed, that they become ineffective. They're so ambitious that they can't be supported by the amount of staff that you have, or they're so rigid that making any changes or updates become really difficult. So we've taken a look at your ordinance and kind of identified where we're seeing those pitfalls. There are several areas that are too detailed, several that are too ambitious or rigid. For example, detailed as part of this project and others that I've been working on throughout the state, I've been looking at a lot of preservation ordinances recently. When I print out the San Juan Batista ordinance, we get it ready in a PDF, it's about over 25 pages. And much bigger cities come in at around 10 to 12 pages. It just gives you an idea of like the amount of information that's included in there that might not be appropriate to include. And you might think like, oh, detail's great, that gives us a really clear directive on what we should be doing. But the city is faced with administering Historic Preservation Ordinance and program with, again, really limited staff and resources. And so to have that burden of going through and making sure that you followed every step, every single time, without it being kind of second nature, costs a lot of time and energy that you frankly don't have to spend. As far as ambitious, the powers and duties outlined have really some of those grand ideas I was talking about that say like investigate, pursue, and report on funding sources, and have two biannual funding reports, which is a really great goal to have. But you're a commission and a city council made up of volunteers using volunteer time. And that's a lot to ask. And it's a lot to have to plan and agendize, really. And so that could maybe be a goal that you have that doesn't need to be codified in the ordinance. And then rigidity. Some of this survey protocol that's included in the ordinance comes from the 2006 survey, which is good, but it doesn't necessarily need to be codified in the ordinance. It gives you good direction on what makes a good survey update, but it's not realistic to expect the ability to update a survey up to best standards and practices. Guidance from OHP suggests updating your survey every five years. I don't know a city in this state that's able to achieve that. It's, it's, it's a goal, it's a lofty goal. And so what's more appropriate is that you're able to survey what you can, when you can. And right now, a lot of that's happening through project review, which is fine. A lot of cities end up capturing resources that way. So to have such a rigid requirement in the ordinance means that you can't meet that requirement. Additionally, the HRB and Planning Commission review process has proven to be inefficient for, I think, all parties involved. The HRB, as I'm sure you know, you are the HRB or partially, is comprised of the same membership as the Planning Commission, but has a distinct set of duties, authorities, and meetings. Further, the HRB is advisory technically to the Planning Commission. So you end up with this funky process where you're closing one meeting, opening another meeting to take the recommendations that you just gave yourself, which you can have a combined body, that's fine, but you don't have to have this weird process where you're kind of bouncing back and forth between yourselves. So that gives an overview of like the three basic buckets of issues that, that we've, we see in your, in the ordinance. Another thing that we see is just like a lot of redundancy, your procedures and criteria for designation of historical resources. It's kind of, it's outlined in what you include in your register. And then it's, it's repeated in your procedures for listing historic resources. And so that could be easily collapsed into one section that just refers to the section above instead of repeating it. It does create some confusion. For example, where you state what is in the historic register, it includes things like California Registered Landmarks and Points of Interest are automatically listed to the register, which in itself is not a bad practice. Most, most cities that have an ordinance capture things that are listed in the California Register of Historic Places and the National Register of Historic Places. They don't often include California Registered Landmarks or Points of Interest because SEQA does not recognize those as historical resources. So the fact that you've captured it in your ordinance means that you've made it for the purposes for San Juan Batista, you've acknowledged those as historical resources for SEQA. So if you ever have a project come forward that includes one of those, you've made it, the potential of a ministerial project become one that is, has to go through review. So little tricky things like that, if someone's really watching and really looking for an opportunity for SEQA vulnerability, that's something that could, could create one. So there's opportunity to streamline some of this information. For your action subject to review, the level of detail, again, could be collapsed and still provide sufficient information for what is subject to review. And details could be more appropriately contained in things like permit instructions. It relies heavily on the 2006 survey level and the use of the status codes. And status codes were initially created in 1975 by the Office of Historic Preservation as a tool for organizing information on resources that they already had information for. And it has been updated several times and are often incomplete when developing, are often incomplete and were developed as broad indicators of types, concentrations, and locations of resources. I'll say that they were created in 1975, they were updated in the early 90s. They used to include like 150 different codes. They were updated again in the late 90s to kind of streamline more to align with SEQA resources. They were updated again in 2003, which is what's codified in your code. And they've most recently been updated in 2020. So the change between 2003 and 2020 wasn't huge, but if you're tying yourself to the process of another agency and organization and you're putting it into your ordinance, it removes flexibility. There are direct SEQA references in the application review that are part of the permitting process that might not otherwise be subject to SEQA and could be more appropriately administered ministerially by staff. I'll get to an example that kind of gets to that in the next slide. But another thing to point out is one of the duties of the HRB is to review site plan and design review for vacant sites with archaeological resources. But then when you get down to the permit review section, there's no direction on how to review those projects where there is clear direction on how to review a project that has a historic building on it. So there's just some inconsistency there that could be cleaned up. The number and detail of definitions is very lengthy. It takes up about three pages of your ordinance. Several are not used, including a number that are related to dangerous building conditions, which is an important topic. I think, again, you could probably collapse that to be a couple of definitions. It might even be more appropriately addressed in a different part of the code. Reading through, and I'm no expert on requirements for disaster relief, but I think a lot of that would probably be triggered by state and federal mandate anyways. So I don't know if a lot of that needs to be captured in your local ordinance. And then this is where the definitions, I've been doing this for a long time. I read a lot of ordinances, I operate in a lot of cities. And when I'm looking at project review examples for the city, I sometimes am scratching my head like, oh, God, is this minor or major? And so this is the definition of minor in your, in your code and major. And it seems pretty obvious at first, like, okay, a minor one is one that does not change the exterior appearance. And major does alter the exterior appearance. But then when you see the examples that are provided subsequently, you have things like roof repair or replacement. And then major has roof attributes. Okay, like I'm, I'm an expert and I'm, well, what's a roof attribute? I'm not, I'm not sure. Window replacement, and then it just kind of lists windows in major. Reciting and siding, repainting and paint or other coating. For example, like if I were an applicant that have, I have a craftsman home. I have three-inch lap wood siding on my house that I want to replace, but I want to replace it with three and a quarter inch lap siding of pressure-treated wood. Is that minor or major? I don't know. It, it seems like that should be an easy enough thing to distinguish. And right now, it makes it really, really hard to figure out what you're supposed to be doing. Even people who want to do the right thing, it's so hard, I think, to determine what the right thing is that what I hear from staff level is that they're just not doing it at all. They're not coming for permits at all because it's too of an arduous process to get through at the moment. Another thing I would point out about the major alteration definition is that there is information about modifications to interiors, but you, under your current code, don't have the authority to designate interiors. So it's, you wouldn't be unable to then administer a program that regulates what people can do on the interiors if you can't designate said interiors. So so right now, when you designate a property, it applies to the exterior only. Typically jurisdictions that allow interior designation limit it either to properties that are owned by the city or spaces that are open to the public. So it'd be like a theater lobby, a bank lobby, hotel lobby, things that are accessible generally to the public. And so it's just another instance where it's inconsistent. Yeah. Yeah. Correct. And you don't have the authority in your code to do that, but you could add it if there was interest. So the way that your designation criteria are currently written, it does not apply to interiors. But if you wanted to update your designation criteria, you could add that. I think we were going to maybe table part of this discussion, we can review it. I'm sure you're aware of this, I've, I've discussed it a little bit tonight. But the current configuration is, is made up of the same members. I know that there was previously an effort to separate that commission and review board, and it failed. And I will say that there are other mechanisms to make that process work. There are plenty of places that have combined review bodies that include both. And I think just the duties and responsibilities and the way that they're outlined is what's creating some of the clunkiness in the process at the moment. With that, I guess you're like, what's next? We recommend updating the ordinance to clear up some of the issues we've highlighted here today. And I want to stress that this isn't to eliminate any of the city's existing authority, but to make the ordinance work better for the community by creating clarity, allowing for more efficient staff-level review, and making the process easier to navigate for all parties involved, for applicants, for staff, and for all of the reviewing bodies. And I think, yeah, these are that, the recommendations just outline a little bit more clearly. And I'm happy to take questions. I know that was a lot. And I kind of, I think, maybe talked too fast. So if you have any, if you have any questions, I'm happy to go back to any of the things that we've covered.
No, that was awesome. Thank you very much for that. I'm thrilled that we had this conversation. Just a little reminder, when everybody is talking, please talk into the microphones because they cannot hear you on Zoom. We have one up. Thank you. Oh, minor detail. Thank you. So if we can go through some questions, comments, concerns, we'll go around the dais first and then we'll take public comment. Councilmember Aranda.
No questions or comments, so thank you for the presentation. Apologies for the tardiness here.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes, thank you. Only comment I have at this juncture, and I'll wait to make more after I hear from public, is it would have been, I think, helpful to have side by side our current Historic Resources ordinance to compare. I understand that you went through it, you pulled out all of the information and critiqued it. But unless we read that currently, it kind of is lost in translation for me. Thank you. We're not to have back and forth, that's my comment.
So thank you for that. Commissioner, Chair, I don't know what to call you. Dan DeBries.
I'm still not clear why I couldn't, I couldn't ask Councilmember what her, what her comment was, but I guess that's for another day. I don't have any other questions or comments.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Pisano.
I, I have two questions. So on your next step, so on your next steps, when you say update the existing historic preservation ordinance, who would do that?
Yeah, we could. So Rincon Consultants, we have done this work for other cities in the past. I do think that you have a good example of a more streamlined ordinance in the ordinance that you had previous to the 2006 changes, or 2008 changes, rather. And so we could start with that as a starting point and make recommendations for what could be revised from that. And I do want to say, there aren't a lot of really, really good things in your ordinance. It just is not maybe the appropriate place to have all of that stuff. There's other places where it could be captured.
Okay. And then the other is when you talk about consider revising the HRB about separate membership. But in the, prior to that, you did say streamline the process because HRB is receiving reviews and then having to approve it, and then it goes to Planning Commission. So if we are going to do separate, would that serve the same purpose? Because then you have an HRB that's
Yeah, so there, there, that's, there's options. That's really what it comes down to. I know because you have a very small population, you have few people that you can pull from to do this kind of work. And so I want to recognize that it wouldn't maybe make sense of you, for you to have a separate Planning Commission and Historic Resources Board. But you could still have a combined body and have the process work better than it does now. One of the things that is a challenge in the ordinance is that it has very particular requirements for people who sit on HRB, which again are really, really good things for a city like Los Angeles, where they can pull from millions of people to find, you know, an architect that can comment on things. So we would maybe recommend looking at the requirements for who's able to sit on HRB and planning. So we would maybe recommend looking at the requirements for who's able to sit on HRB and planning commission. So that you're not so constrained on who can sit.
Okay. And then regarding results of historic preservation ordinance review and recommendations. So it's nice to see that San Juan Baptista has met most of what's recommended. Can you expound on enabling authority? Because that's the one thing that's missing, right?
Sure. And a lot of municipalities don't include that. It's a recommendation, and I think a good one to follow, especially as. The state continues to hand down streamlining and directives for how to do planning and how to do. I, I don't think there's quite the development pressure in San Juan Baptista's other places. But the authority to have a historic preservation ordinance comes from the California constitution. And to include that is, is good to acknowledge that you're exercising your police power as provided by the California state constitution.
Okay. So if we were to go next steps, that's one of the things that you would.
Yeah. And it would be as easy as adding a sentence.
Then on the definitions, so is that going to be fixed as far as because?
I would like to.
Okay. So can you tell me or tell us where that came from as far as the definitions? When were these developed?
So the definitions that are in your code right now are the result of, I think, an amalgamation, really. Some of it are things that were existing in the previous version, and then you kind of kept adding to it. And that's why it's so long right now. It includes things that you, you don't really need to know. I think the important things would be to clarify what. Minor alterations and major alterations that would probably benefit your program the most in the immediate future. One of the things that would also help the review times and help the stress on staff is to allow. More of the minor alteration applications get reviewed at staff level. So that applicants don't have to wait for a public meeting and don't have to wait for space and time on the agenda. And also keeps things ministerial, which is useful for review protocols.
Okay. And hopefully last question.
Yeah.
So Commissioner Marterana asked about authority to designate, and you said, we do not have authority.
You do have the authority to designate. You have a local, your ordinance provides the authority to designate historic resources, which you do now, and you have several on your list. What I was referring to was interiors. So right now it applies to exteriors. As do most municipalities and jurisdictions usually limit their designation to exteriors. Except for the special circumstances where they want to designate particular interiors that are open to the public.
So would you recommend then that that be included as part of the authority or just?
It's up to you. I mean, there's some benefit in it, especially if you have a lot of public spaces that. Are important to your community that you think would benefit from having. The ability for your historic resources review board to review any proposed changes to those spaces. But plenty of places with really good historic preservation ordinances don't designate their interior, or don't have the authority to designate their interiors. It's just something to consider and something where there was some inconsistency in your code at the moment.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yep.
Sorry, Mayor Protem Sebastian.
Thank you. One of my big comments, I appreciated your entire presentation. My years sitting and serving here, like the staff has issues with what's going on and has been asking for help to update this. Almost every person who sat on or that we've helped appoint to HRB planning commission is like, how do I? And then especially from, you know, the members of our community, they're like. Like you mentioned, I'm trying to do the right thing, but like, I read this sentence over and over again, and I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing. I just wanna. Oftentimes it's somebody's home, right? I'm trying to. You know, be a good steward of my historical home, but I want to live in it. How, how do I? So there's a lot of that cleaning all that. I mean, we sat even in making our, our ordinance or, or. In MOU, right? We all agreed at some point and several times, we're all trying to do the same thing. We sat and just wordsmithed over and over again, so that it was clear to anybody who read it. What they were reading and what they were supposed to do and what was going on. And so I appreciate you pointing out and reviewing where we have those kinds of issues. I appreciate the examples that you brought forth that like, you know, not just making the statement, right? Oh, you have a problem, but highlighting here is the issue. And so I, I look forward to us being able to go through and review and not really change the intent of anything that was done, but just make it so much more clear. And able for people to understand it and operate within the bounds of, of what we're going, doing here.
Councilmember Freels.
Thank you. Thank you for presentation. I, I love hearing words like streamline. Cause we have a limited staff and something as simple as a fencing ordinance is taken six months to do. So, and I also like the fact that we have a non-biased professional opinion into this. I can tell you back in the late seventies, early eighties, there was a lot of opinions. There was a lot of personal opinions. And a lot of kind of bullying. And back then it was called the, it was, it was called the cultural resource board. It wasn't historic resource board. And I'm not sure when they changed it, but I got to watch this evolve into Sequa-like ridiculousness over the years. It'd be nice to streamline the, the process and. Hopefully you won't do like at the consultant firm we had in 2006 that. Thursday, the, the final document was due and Wednesday night, the person was running around taking photos and. Working through the night, taking photo, you know, taking photos and printing out the 2006 documentation. She was a little distracted, but thank you. Thank you. This, I'm gonna enjoy watching this. Thank you.
That's a good way to put it. I enjoy watching this. Commissioner Marterana.
I have also very much enjoyed the presentation. Thank you. You mentioned points of interest and something else that are automatically designated. What was that?
California Historic Landmarks, which is a program, so the California Register of Historical Resources, which is the state. List, state inventory, was created in 1992. So we have lists that predate the establishment of the California Register. A lot of those older designations don't usually include buildings. It's like, oh, the site of. And so from a Sequa perspective, there's nothing to review as far as like impacts to cultural or adverse effects. And so the language that's in the Sequa guidelines right now doesn't include California Points of Interest. And California Historic Landmarks are only included after like landmark number 770 or something like that, some 776, something like that. And if there is one that is older than that, you, the recommendation from OHP is to. Review it and evaluate it against the California Register criteria. So old preservation, I say all the time, it must've been so easy to do this job in the sixties. They were kind of just making lists, you know, and there was no documentation or to, to support what that designation meant. So for that reason, they've been kind of, the list is maintained and kept and still exists, but those aren't recognized as historical resources for Sequa.
Okay. Do we currently have any points of interest or historical landmarks within the city limits?
I don't know, but I wouldn't be surprised if you did.
Okay. We don't know. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done.
Oh, sorry.
Keep going. Have at your bad self. Carry on.
How, if, if you guys were engaged, and I gather, so you have not been engaged to, to do.
We haven't so far. So we're part of it. We have an on-call contract at the moment. And we've been using that on-call contract to support some of the staff level review for permit applications. And then we were given the go-ahead to look at this ordinance and provide our recommendations. So we haven't done anything beyond that at this point.
And so if the, if the choice is made to engage you to do this, what do you, how long do you think it would take? To come back with a completed revised ordinance?
I don't think actually writing the ordinance would take too long because there are a lot of really great examples that we could use as reference. And there's guidance from the Office of Historic Preservation that we could rely on. And like I said, your previous version is probably a, a good starting point that we could work off of. So it would only take a few months really to do that. And then we would have to come back to, to you all for, as decision makers to adopt that.
Okay.
When you say previous, you mean 2006?
Before 2006. Yeah. Or 2008. Sorry, the survey was 2006. The ordinance update was in 2008. So the version that predated the 2008 update. In my opinion, isn't easier to understand and use ordinance. Again, I do think there are really good things that were captured in the ordinance update that could be better suited to be addressed in supplementary. Materials and guidance documents. And I think the other, sorry, I'm just like. The other place of opportunity is having some kind of onboarding documents for historic resources board members. And kind of an orientation packet that could easily lay out like, here's your responsibilities. These are the questions that are being asked of you, and this is how you make those determinations.
You referred to the constraints on membership. And I was curious if you could give us an example of what.
Yeah, I think right now your ordinance lays out that it has to be a five-member review board. And I think one has to be an architect or one has to be a historian and two, I, I think you only have one public member at large. And so when you're pulling on such a small population, it's, it's hard to fill those designated.
Yeah.
Spots. And so you could revise that to not be so difficult to, to meet.
Yeah. You know, skills we'd like to see in our members.
Yeah.
Microphone.
Yeah, that takes the opinion out of it, the architect or the historian. And then all they have to do is read the guide that we've created.
And it would be great if you had, like, you know, if this was a community made up of, you know, 500 historians, what a dream, but that's not reality, you know, that's not, it's going to be difficult to, to find people to do. What, I mean, I used to sit on a planning commission, which is, you know, difficult volunteer work.
Sure. Okay. So I, we're, this is a presentation, so no action comes out of this. But I'm gonna suggest a path forward that pertaining to the two, the two groups here. I'd say number one, we should separately have a discussion about splitting or revising the duties of the planning commission and HRB. And that I think that, you know, maybe with some, some input from, from Rincon and staff as to what they, their thoughts are. And then have both bodies take up that conversation and then come back ultimately. It's the council's ultimate decision, but maybe the, the planning commission, HRB can put together their thoughts, present it, and then you guys could potentially act. Act on that. And then second, the second item is I think that we should create a committee. Like probably composed or constituted much like the, the one that we did, the MOU and the, the sphere of influence. To review the updates on a process, you know, like it may be every other week or once a month, have a, have a team's call or something with Rincon. To, to give them feedback and have a little bit of back and forth and a little bit of input before waiting months to get feedback. And then it's sort of an all or nothing. And I think part of that process needs to identify not just the changes to the, to the historic preservation ordinance. But you, you talked about having, you know, embodying those, the more detailed information of the specifics in supporting documentation. And we, we need to have that be clearly, you know, spelled out as well as, as part of this process. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, hang on. Sorry. Commissioner Sanchez.
Juliana, thank you for your time and constructive critique of our process and flows. That's really helpful. I would also like to thank you for the recommendation of an onboarding process. You know, someone eager and young as myself would definitely appreciate that. And as, as I'm sure many other people who sit in these exact same scenarios. I would like to double down on your examples of recommendations. And it doesn't have to be now. It could be on a follow-up, whether, whether it be email or mess or. Or follow-up meeting. One of them would be. The recommendation was for a hybrid process between both HRB and planning commissions. I'd like to see instances or scenarios on what other cities have done this. And also, you know, and honestly, I'd like to see instances of when it failed and when it was successful. That way we have a broad spectrum to look, look at and examples. And my last one would be the historic preservation ordinance. Whittling it down from 25 pages to normal big cities have 10. I would love to see examples of both how they succeeded and how they failed. And that is it. Again, thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bretton.
Thank you. I apologize for being late. I did have an opportunity to go over all of the materials prior to attending the meeting tonight. And I guess I'm gonna be the thorn in the side here. I do not agree that we should combine the HRB and planning commissions together. I think that they are two completely separate organizations with two very different missions and goals and objectives. Some overlap. I wouldn't say a tremendous amount, maybe 25% max. But I believe that having, with what you mentioned in regards to the small number of people we have to pull from, this is a really smart solution. And with this planning commission, and I guess I'm gonna brag, I believe we are all on the same page. And we all want to move forward with this community preserving all of our historical attributes. But also moving forward and making sure that our rules and regulations in regards to planning and building and maintaining are all adhered to. With that being said, I do agree with you that I think we need to have precise, concise rules and regulations. With latitude for staff to do more, like with what you said, with the minor, with the minor changes versus the major changes. My understanding as a planning commissioner and a board member of the HRB, I am here to support. And make the city council's job easier by taking some of the more minor, more regulated, easier to. The rules that are already set to make sure that those are adhered to, so that they do not have to. With that being said, I think that we can save a tremendous amount of money by sitting down for two hours reviewing the documents. Ideally with you highlighting the changes that you'd like to see made. We can review them, give them our feedback, save the city a tremendous amount of money and get this moving very quickly. That's my take. I do have a couple of other comments. I wanted to just briefly mention, I think by clarifying the rules. It will make it a lot easier on the residents that are here and in regards to exactly what they need to do. But in addition to that, making it much easier for staff are, you know, they're here to, you know. This is their job. This is their career. Let's make it easy on them to be successful. So that we don't have fights and, you know, people coming to us saying, he said, she said, you know, here are the rules. It's plain as day. I love that. But again, I really want to save money. And, and again, I want to say that looking forward in the future. I believe that we need to leave the HRB and the planning commission the way they are as two separate, two separate entities. And for right now, leave it the same people on both HRB and planning commission. And the last thing I wanted to mention was, in the documentation, I actually read it and I apologize, I don't remember the name of it. But, you know, the HRB information, Chairman De Vries, you actually gave me that documentation to review. And it didn't say that they had to be, you know. A historian, that they had to be an architect. It said in an ideal world, this would be wonderful. But really we want people that are passionate and understand this. And I think that that wording is perfectly fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Was that your follow-up? Thank you. Got it. Thank you. I did good, huh? Thank you very much. I am going to. Thank you very much. I am going to, and I appreciate all of the comments from the commission and the council. Really, really good feedback. Just a quick note, we haven't given the go ahead for Rincon to actually take this on. Rincon has done the preliminary study on what we need. And that's for us to figure out and staff to figure out if we actually have the the monies for that. And and where they're coming from, budgets coming up soon. I would like to now turn it over to public comment. Who's taking this part? Are you taking this part? Thank you.
I think Liz is taking this part, but if there are any members in the audience who wish to do public comment, I need your speaker cards up here.
Liz, are you on?
Yes, I am. I see one hand raised on Zoom, but unfortunately I'm not able to see who's who's in council chambers.
No one so far, Liz.
Okay, so just one speaker car, I mean, one hand raised. Shawna, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Council, Planning Commission, I'm Shawna Frielz. I am an owner of a historically significant building on Polk Street. It's known as the Rosa's House and it was built in eighteen fifty six and we all know how funky that place is. We're in the process of attempting to do some restoration to that building and it's really minor modifications. And I love to hear what Rincon has to say for you. The processes as they are in place right now make it number one, cost prohibitive. And I think that's something that both the commission and the council should be really taking a focus on is that section of our code eleven dash six dash one thirty that speaks to incentives for historic preservation. And back in the early two thousands, the city actually took a whole year of waiving some of those permit fees, not permit processes, but fees. And over half a dozen historic buildings were restored in San Juan Batista because the city really was focusing on historic preservation. I also think it's important for the council to consider actually enacting the Mills Act. It's in our code, but we've never enacted it. And I don't understand why. It's really just putting a mechanism in place. The, you know, legalities of it are there for you. Models are all around us in communities, cities and counties all around us. It's not that difficult. But it would really enhance that need or or interest in historic preservation. And then I did want to just share a little bit back in the day, we did have a Cultural Resources Board made up of a small group of citizens in San Juan Batista. It was before we had a Historic Heritage Committee. And that Cultural Resources Board were people with strong interest in historic preservation, owners of historic homes. They were separate from the Planning Commission. They met as needed and you see that, you know, I worked for the City of Gilroy. We had a historic, we have Historic Heritage Committee. They only meet as needed. They make recommendations to their planning commission and it gives them the opportunity to really hone in and focus on historic preservation and not be split between the two. And Planning Commission and Historic Heritage Committee. So so those things I think are really important for the council to consider. Once again, giving some sort of preservation incentives to our property owners here in San Juan Batista will really help give us a little facelift. And as you all know, San Juan could certainly use a facelift with regards to historic preservation. We are the city of history and that's what draws people to our town. So again, I want to thank Rincon fabulous, fabulous recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments in chambers? No speaker cards? Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
You're done.
Hang on. Thank you. Anything else?
No comments or questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
To the it's not on, sorry about that. Yeah, I had a question when you addressed or said that interiors were exempt from this, these codes, is that correct?
Right now, your designation criteria does not extend to interiors.
Okay, is that something that we could do?
You could, yeah. So designation criteria. Some cities choose to just reflect what is the National Register and California Register criteria, they're essentially identical. And other communities decide to include more different type of criteria. And so that is an opportunity to distinguish what you want to designate and to recognize particular or interesting histories that are specific to your city. So some cities just have the four criteria that are in the California Register and some choose to have more.
The reason why I bring that up, and I know all of us sitting here at this dais and in the audience are well aware. One of your slides depicts a picture of La Casa Rosa, which was on the register and historic. And what happened to that was just a crying shame. We had private party purchases, I think about five, six years ago, mayor. And so their plans were to keep it as a restaurant slash bar, which it was a restaurant. And it was public. And what they did is they just destroyed the inside of ancient redwood planks. Now, if you go and you look in the window now, it's still vacant and it's just got sheet rock on it. So the integrity of what I interpret, and that's me, I don't know anyone else. Historic value and preservation should also include in some of these properties, interior. And here on the first, the slide about minor versus major alteration, you list or it's listed in the very last paragraph, all the things that qualifies interior locations, buildings. And this I consider a public space, a restaurant.
Right, so that's included in your definitions, but it's not included in your designation criteria. So that's one of the inconsistencies that we identified is that you've acknowledged it in your definition. But then there is no authority or no mechanism in your code to actually have a review over reviews of what happens in any interiors.
So at this point, the way that we're sitting, if we don't fix this, other buildings in our town that have that are historic. And if an owner decided to alter the interior and lose that historic value, this could happen right now.
Yes.
Okay, I like the idea of Commissioner Elise, I'm thinking of your last name, where we would sit, Bretton, would sit with this committee and go, you know, page by page with your company, with you and just do the work and look at. And that's what I'm referencing, not to be picky or petty. But this is the part where I think if we had the actual document and probably that's coming later when we sit and do the work, if we choose to work with you to look at each section and see what we want to retain and what needs to be cleaned up because I can see what you're saying. Sometimes, you know, five words can take the place and two words better and and clarify for the public and for us as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner. Mayor Protem, councilmember, Commissioner, Commissioner, Commissioner. Take it away, Commissioner Bretton.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Just a couple of things. Number one, I wanted to touch base on the Mills Act.
Is this better?
Way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. The first piece I wanted to just mention was the Mills Act. I don't know how many have watched the planning and HRB meetings that we have had, but we've actually discussed the Mills Act. And based on my understanding of the Mills Act, I think it was the judgment of the HRB and the Planning Commission not to move forward with a recommendation of utilizing the Mills Act at this time, simply because it would take away from what it does is it allows the city to basically take away money in exchange for other, for other, you know, for renovation and that sort of thing, closer to what Shawna was saying in regards to benefits. And given all that was going on here, we felt that there were other better opportunities and ways for us to help resurrect some of the buildings in this town other than through the Mills Act. So that's the first piece I wanted to mention. The second piece was we have an issue and it's actually, I'm glad Shawna did mention the Rosa's House. Because there's an example there where I believe that the Planning Commission and the city council need to work closely together. And that is on the sidewalk piece. So they have wood plank boardwalk coming in that they'd like to replace. And Shawna was gracious enough to come in and actually talk to the planning and HRB and discuss that with us. And it was like, well, do they replace the boardwalk or with cement or, you know, is it a danger thing? Will they get sued if they leave in the boardwalk? And those are the changes that I think we really need to address right away. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank, like, wait, it's my turn. Thank you very much. This was amazing to actually see this laid out, something that that we've been talking about as long as I've been on the council. And I know a former mayor who was talking about it way back when. So appreciate all the work that you have done on this so far and and giving us a basis on where to go. I appreciate it. I appreciate all the comments that were up here as well and from public comment. Awesome. Thank you for 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 being our our new consultant.
Thank you.
Having no other comments. Our our technically scheduled meeting is for Tuesday, May thirteenth. Wait, what? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. Motion made by Mayor Protem Sabathia, seconded by Commissioner Madarana. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Frielz?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sabathia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bretton?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark Turana? Commissioner Pisano?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
And Chair De Vries?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all. Meeting adjourned.
Start the next one early.
Liz, can you hear us? Do you want me to do any other action or any items on the Zoom?
No, no, not right now. I will later, but not right now.
Okay, no worries.
We're not doing the Pledge of Allegiance again, are we?
Yes, we we have to.
Thank you. Are we ready?
Whenever you're ready, mayor.
Thank you. Welcome to the City Council Special Meeting of the City of San Juan Batista, Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty five at seven oh two. Councilmember Frielz, will you please start us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Here.
Councilmember Frielz?
Here.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Sabathia?
Here.
And Mayor Jordan?
Here.
Thank you. Public comments, public comments are limited to items on the special meeting agenda pursuant to California Government Code Section five four nine five four point three B. If you wish to make a public comment on this item, please wait for the item to be called. Closed session. We are now going to close session. Do we have any public comment? There is no one in chambers.
And see no hands raised on Zoom, Meta Mayor?
Thank you. We are now adjourning to public, to closed session. See you all at seven thirty.
Thank you.
Liz, are we ready?
Yes, Meta Mayor?
Thank you very much. City Attorney, can you please take us out of closed session?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council and public. The City Council met in closed session on item two A, Public Employee Employment. California Government Code Section five four nine five seven B one, City Manager. There's nothing to report out.
Thank you very much. Item three is an action item to appoint slash hire a city manager. Who reads this part? City Attorney Giffen? City Attorney Giffen, can you please?
Yes. What would you like me to do?
Just read the first part, I guess.
Read the first part of
This is, we're receiving a report, a report from the city attorney on what we are, what what action we are taking now, what our job is now.
Yes, your job here now is to vote to appoint Ashley Colick as city manager and approve a resolution approving the city manager employment agreement.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments, concerns from the council, Councilmember Aranda?
Other than I am excited to have Ashley come on board as our city manager.
Thank you. Councilmember Frielz.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
No questions.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sabathia.
Excited that we were able to get this done and close the deal on an excellent candidate.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from the public? Do we have anybody on Zoom?
Meta Mayor, we have one person, but it's, there's no hands raised on Zoom. I'm not sure.
Speaker cards for anybody in chambers? We're good here. Thank you. Back to the council. Any further questions, comments, concerns? Thank you very much. May I have a motion to hire Ashley Colick as our city manager and approve a resolution approving the city manager employment agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Mayor Protem Sabathia, seconded by Councilmember Morris Lopez. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Frielz?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Protem Sabathia?
Yes.
And Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
It is with great pleasure and an honor to officially welcome you as our city manager. Do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
For the masses.
Speech for the masses. I just wanted to say thank you to the council and to the community because I'm sure they're going to watch this at some point in that I am extremely excited to be here. It's been a really exciting five months and I'm super excited to see what other great things we can accomplish together. And I hope to continue progressing the city forward in the manner that the council and the community wants to see. So I'm super excited about that. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. If if the last five months is a preview of what the next five years will be, I'm very much looking forward to it. Thank you. Job for you. Consent agenda items, there are two items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone who would wish to pull an item? No, thank you. May I have a motion to approve items A and B?
So moved.
Thank you, councilmembers. Mayor Protem Sabathia, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aranda. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Frios?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sabathia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes, and I apologize. I did not, I did not go to public comment on that. So go ahead.
There was no hands raised on Zoom, anybody wanting, wishing to push, to pull that item? I don't see if there was anybody from the, the chambers that raised a hand or came, came up to the podium.
No. Thank you. So go ahead. You, now, now you can say that it was a
Motion carried. Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, next regularly scheduled meeting is Tuesday, May 20th. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Mayor Protem Sabathia, seconded by Councilmember Frios. Uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Frios?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sabathia?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes, 7:36, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.